We got it.
Aye.
I'd like to call this Director's Meeting of the Lincoln City Council for Monday, August 3rd, 2020. Everybody knows in the back of the room, we have the Opens Meeting Act is posted, and we'll go through our agenda. Any changes to the minutes that anybody would like to do? Seen none. Minutes will stand as published. Adjustments to the agenda. Do anybody like to make any changes to our agenda? One thing I would like to talk about is for the Directors. If any of you would like to speak with any of the Directors, could you, would you like to speak up now? Benny, would you like to speak with anybody?
Mr. Chair, I appreciate the offer, but I will pass today. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Washington.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have a quick word with Dan Marvin, Lynn Johnson, and Tim C., and Kristi. Mr. Kristi, turn.
You gonna leave anybody else for us, or?
Uh, no.
Councilperson Ward.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think I-
I don't think our mics are on, are they?
Do turntables, any?
I would like to also talk to, oh, now we're live with Mr. Kristi and/or Tim C., one or the other. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to talk with Pat Lopez, if possible. You are good. Councilperson Christensen.
Pass.
Councilperson-
Mr. Kristi and Mr. Johnson.
Okay, and that'll be at the end of the meeting. We could just meet and kinda find places around the room where we could talk.
Yeah.
Okay. City Clerk, what do we have for changes to our meeting?
I'll be calling items 2A and 2C together on the consent agenda. And in Section 4A, we do have a motion to amend number 1.
Okay.
In Section 5, I'll be calling items 5C and 5E together.
C and B?
C, D, and E. Those three I'll call together.
Okay.
Item 5F has a motion to amend number 1.
Okay.
And Sonny, on that one, we are going to also make a motion to suspend the rules so that we can take action on that today and vote.
On 5F?
5F, as in Frank. Yep.
So a motion to suspend rules and then also that motion to amend number 1. Okay.
Yep.
All right. And then we have in Section 7, items 7A and 7B, which is action only.
Okay.
Our resolutions, first readings is items 8A through 8G. This first reading, items 9A through 9D. Two items on our pending list date certain, items 10A and 10B. And our pending list is items 11A through 11C.
Okay.
We'll adjourn that meeting, and then we'll move on to the public hearing for the City of Lincoln budget. We'll have a budget presentation, which our Finance Director, Brandon Kaufman, and also our LTU Representatives and Director Elizabeth Elliott and Thomas Schaefer may be present. And then we also have a presentation from the Mayor's Office, Mr. John Carlson. And then Sections 12 and 13, I will read everything all together at one time. So resolutions, all, and then Section 13 ordinances, all, and then we'll move to testimony with departments and then testimony with the public.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for the agenda? Okay, seen none. Thank you. Sonny, would the Mayor like to come up and say anything at this point? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman McGinnis and members of the council. Thanks so much for having me down. And greetings, Madam Clerk. Congratulations. Thanks for this opportunity to share just a bit of information. I thought I'd speak briefly about the Economic Recovery Task Force and the COVID-19 risk dial, but first wanted to thank you first and foremost for all of the work that we've done together on the budget. I know it's potentially a long night. Appreciate all that you've done to hear from the public and for all the deliberation that you've already put into this effort. And so, thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. And with regard to the Economic Recovery Task Force, I wanted to just update you a bit on the process. In the coming week or two, we should have recommended strategies to support local businesses and workforce development that the Task Force is going to be developing, and they're expected to finalize those recommendations and present them in a final report by the end of the month. And in the spirit of engagement and gathering input and feedback from our residents and many organizations across Lincoln, they went ahead and put out a survey. And that survey had a, was really looking at what the impact of COVID-19 has been on organizations and people in our community. Over 280 organizations responded to the survey, and the top areas in which companies are seeking support include clear guidance on how to create a safe working environment, information on accessing financial assistance, access to PPE, and guidance on how to support their employees' mental health and social connectedness. So those are some of the highlights from that survey. There was also a great deal of interest among people who took the survey in connecting other organizations who were interested in sort of peer-to-peer or business-to-business supports. My understanding is that the Task Force is taking a close look at how we can support those types of peer-to-peer opportunities and relationships and try to leverage our community's existing resources. And if you have any more questions or comments or concerns, anything that you'd like to know more about the Task Force, the point person in my office on this is Alyssa Martin, the Lead Policy aide on the Lincoln Forward Initiative. And then with the COVID risk dial, Friday, if you didn't catch the press briefing, we spent a lot of time talking about the metrics and the deliberation and determination of the placement of the dial. Raju Kakulupudi, who is an epidemiologist, came and spoke to some of the numbers behind the dial. And so that presentation was completed. But also on Friday, we were featured as a city, as a community, in terms of the dial, on our innovative efforts to communicate risk and to navigate the pandemic in Bloomberg's Cities Newsletter. This goes out to cities across the country and internationally, and I brought copies. If I can pass them under here to you, Madam Clerk. This article featured three cities, and Lincoln was at the top of the list, featured our risk dial, and has quotes from both Raju and Scott Holmes in our Environmental Health Division. And we're just really, really proud of our health team and all the work they did to innovate and come up with this means of communicating risk in our community and providing guidance so that people can keep themselves safe and our community safe. So I just wanted to share that with you today and offer up if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions for the Mayor? Seen none. Thank you so much for coming down. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work we've been doing, you've been doing, so.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay. Would Health Director, Health Department Director Pat Lopez like to come up and give us a little update?
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. Today, we'll probably have additional tests reported later this afternoon, but we're just at over 3,000. So we're at 3,118 positive cases. And we currently have tested about 45,500 people in our community, which is about 14% of our population. And I think I've shared with you before that about our racial and ethnic minority cases. And now they're at 47%, which is a decrease in the members of those communities being impacted. Our trends started changing since the beginning of June, where we were seeing 70% of the cases now in the white population. And within the last two to three weeks, 77% of all cases are in the white population. I mentioned earlier that Lancaster County has a lot of cases with younger individuals. And 63% of all our cases reported in the first full week of July were in the 20 to 29-year-old age group. That percentage dropped to 43% in the last week of July, so that's an improvement. We'd like to see that improve further. We now have 15 deaths due to COVID-19 in Lancaster County, and we know that we have some individuals who are very critically ill at this point, too. Our positivity rate for cases reported last week, ending Saturday, is 7.2%, which is a little lower than 8.3% the week earlier. Overall, our positivity rate is 6.8% Lancaster County. And as of midnight, we had 24 individuals in the hospital due to COVID-19, and now these 10 are from Lancaster County and 2 are on ventilators. Our hospital capacity remains really good. 47% of our ICU beds are available. 87% of our ventilators are available in the hospitals here. We're able to still continue to do contact tracing within 24 hours after receiving notification of a positive individual. We have had some work done. We've been working directly with the Governor's Office and Department of Health and Human Services to resolve longstanding testing issue with one of the companies that a couple of our businesses are using for testing. Their timeline for getting reports back is usually from six to 10 days, and that's just too long. So the Governor's been very active in assisting us and working with that company in the lab to address that. I think the Mayor mentioned a little about the COVID risk dial, and I just wanted to share with you, you know, there's a lot of varieties of beliefs and opinions about our local situation. I'm sure you hear that quite frequently. And there are many models out there on the internet, and most people can find one to fit their beliefs of where Lincoln should be and what we should be doing. But most of these have been developed in an attempt to universally provide an idea of risk in different parts of the country. And if you go on the website for COVID-19 now in the city, you'll see all the metrics listed that go into our dial. And it's not just considering one measure, it's considering multiple measure of data that we need to look at to give us an overall broad view of what's happening in our community. Our calls related to changes in the directive health measures have decreased dramatically. We still get calls asking from businesses what they need to do, what information we have and resources. We have people in the community reporting on C, Click, Fix frequently if they see different violations going on, and we follow up with those. But overall, it's been a really positive experience, and the Health Department's received a lot of positive comments. We are going to be going out. We met with the bars in downtown Lincoln on Friday afternoon at their request, and we are going to be going out and meeting with them, offering to do some individual work with them to make sure that they have the tools they need to be successful in being open. There's a strong willingness and desire to keep open, and we want to keep all our businesses open in the community. I also wanted to update you a little bit on test kits and where we're at with long-term care facilities. So, so far, we've distributed 4,500 test kits to the long-term care facilities. And they need to do this testing so they can move forward in allowing individuals to come back in and see their family members. We have one long-term care center that's moved to Phase 3. We have several others in process of Phase 2. But in doing that, we've also provided 384,000 pieces of PPE to 33 long-term care and assisted livings in the community. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is that we've approved 41 events so far. We have five in the queue, and that's an easy online registration process. We've had great success in working with Tom Lorenz and Pinnacle Bank Arena in arranging some events. We've been working with the rail yard on how they can have some events there. I think the Beach Boys went really well last night from everything I heard. I didn't attend. And the last thing I want to mention to you is that Test Nebraska moved for our Lincoln location to Gateway. And I understand that Dr. Rapp and Steve Beal were both out there directing traffic at first till we got some right signage up, but it was very successful in the move to the Gateway parking area. And they've been great to work with, and we very much appreciated our partnership with Saint East and Bryan in trying to make sure we get testing in the community. It's all in there.
Yes.
Thank you, Pat, very much for the update. In your conversations with the bars and the bar owners, did they share with you any additional mitigation steps they plan to put in place when UNL classes resume? I know the first week of classes, I believe, at UNL will be remote, but, you know, that's a big concern that I've heard from many members in our community.
And that's actually, we'll be working with them on that. And, you know, we're also asking individuals to be responsible, too, but it does present a great challenge to the bar owners. So we will be working with them on the mitigation. That's part of what the discussion was about Friday.
Did they come up with any stronger measures that they plan to put in place to really ensure that people that come in are wearing a mask and that when they sit down and they stay seated?
I think they all plan to follow the directive health measure. And they talked about, one of the bars now has taken out some of the seating. They moved around some of the seating they have. We could give guidance on how they can put some Plexiglas shields in. So they're really working towards keeping that. Because the bar owners, not only with increased patronage coming in, they have to be concerned about their workers, too. So we're trying to create an environment that's safe for both and allow them to keep their business open.
And I just have one last follow-up question. With the increase in positivity rate in the last, like, three weeks, I know before you had mentioned the percentage of, or the age group that have been increasing in the positivity rate. Can you share with us what that positivity rate is for the age group of 20 to 29? I think that's what you were working with before.
Yes. Right now, it's come down some, so it's 43% last week.
43%?
Mm-hmm.
And the overall positivity rate, I think you said was-
Of those tests. I don't know the, I'm sorry. I was telling the percentage of positive cases. I haven't calculated the positivity rate for that group. I could do it if I sit back here and think about it a minute.
Okay. But still, from that age group that's being tested, you said 43% are coming back positive?
In the, what we saw of the positive cases.
Okay.
The 21 to 29-year-olds.
Forty, 43% of those positive cases are the age group of 20 to 29. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. One quick question. Saint East, Saint Elizabeth, and CHI are also still doing testing, correct?
Yes.
And where are they?
They're at the same location in Gateway. It's just a different drive-through lane.
Okay.
So they're still continuing to do it along with Test Nebraska.
And Bryan LGH?
Yes, and Bryan is still doing testing at their location on 27th and about Pine Lake at Life Point. And they're averaging over 200 tests a day through that drive-through, too.
Do we need more testing sites?
I think we're good.
We're good for-
And if we need to, both Saint East and Bryan have offered to do additional. But I think the systems work really well there because we're both close to where if somebody, an individual, would need care quicker, we really, I really personally, as a Health Director, really like that. And so do the hospitals because we can get people in and get them seen right away.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay. Planning Department, weekly administrative approvals. We all saw those. Okay. Boards. Councilperson Shoeb, Chrisensen, the PAC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Performance Audit Committee did meet last week in an abbreviated meeting. As you may remember, fellow council members, we proposed and we're going to research changes in Startran and changes from Transport Plus to the Handy Van Service, but we had this small hiccup in our society where things were interrupted. So we're, we took a pause. We discussed whether we should continue doing an evaluation of that program or moving to a different program, or, and we're gonna take another month to reevaluate where we should be and decide on what we're going to report on. Things are changing, and maybe we might delay that. But we met and had a healthy conversation, and a good time was had by me.
Okay.
Mr. Christians, you want to add anything to that?
That's a good summary.
Yeah.
You had a good time.
Yeah, I had a good time. I'm sorry, Mr. Bowers. I logged into the wrong account on those zoom.
We're gonna let him speak next.
Yeah. That was my fault. I screwed that up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Problem Resolution Team. Councilperson Bowers.
Nothing, nothing major to report with the PRT Committee. Some cases still stay on pending. Three cases were removed. Nothing really major to report.
Okay.
Okay. Also, the DEC and the West Haymarket JPA, Councilperson Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. DEC did meet on July 21st. It was the noon after one of our shorter meetings. Actually, it was after one of our longer meetings. But nonetheless, the major item I think that would be of interest to mention, we had a briefing from LES staff at this meeting regarding customer financing obligations should peers default on their payments, DEC payments, because we're renewing the bonds this fall. So we're looking at other meetings with some of our customers, our DEC customers, and trying to talk to them before our October DEC meeting and seeing what that may look like. It's not been a problem in the past, and we certainly don't want it to be. So the timing is good because we are refinancing our bonds, and Bond Council has advised us to take a look at that. So that's the major item that we talked about at DEC. And unless there are questions, I will launch into the West Haymarket JPA meeting.
Go ahead.
Okay. The JPA for the West Haymarket met on July 23rd, and I think of interest to council and audience would be the approval that we did of council action the prior week for the TDB Phase 1 and 2, number 1 and 2, to change those restrictions in the Haymarket. So the JPA also approved those after council did. So it was, other than that, I think it was a fairly short meeting of the JPA. We'll meet again in August. Those are my reports. Happy to answer any questions.
Good.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Joint Budget Committee, Councilwoman Bowers or Councilwoman Washington, would you like to speak?
Thank you. And I would. I'm looking at the Chairman of the JBC.
Okay.
And I think he's thrown the baton in my lap, so I will pick up on that. The Joint Budget Committee Juvenile Services met on July 21st in the afternoon. We had, I thought, a very good meeting. We discussed the progress on the Lancaster County Juvenile Justice data. Things are, things that were in a pretty good place there. We also spent some time talking about the fact that with the social unrest in the community and people asking for mental health services, that we may want to do a little bit more patting ourselves on the back publicly and verbally about the work that happens through JBC and the amount of funding that goes to mental health services. So we'll be, we'll be elevating that a little bit more, and I would ask folks to look at agenda item today, the first one, and consent having to do with $25,000 in Keno money, Keno lottery funds. That is one of those things that we work on in JBC and advise- things that we work on in JBC and provides services here in our community, that we just want people to know that we're not asleep. We also had just an update on how COVID has affected the community in this area and a very good and robust conversation on racial equity and justice and what we could do to elevate or move forward that area in juvenile justice work.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else to add? Perfect. Okay, Internal Liquor Committee, Councilperson Washington or Christensen?
Well, we had a meeting last Monday, and we met with some people from our Health Department and discussed the interactions between the Health Department and some of our liquor licensees in the city and how they were or were not able to successfully comply with the requirements of the directed health measures. You want to add some, any comments?
I was, oh, microphone. I was certainly comforted, assured by Director Pat Lopez that there was a lot of communication with individual bars, face-to-face conversations, phone calls, letters, multiple ways to encourage folks to adhere to the DHM before the direction is given to close for 24 hours. And so I feel very good that our Health Department is doing what they can to communicate proactively with folks before we take a big step.
Anything else? Yeah, Benny?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, fellow committee member. Yeah, fellow committee member, this one. It gets a little confusing. I want to echo what Councilwoman Washington said, the communication part. And Director Lopez said a few minutes ago, they're gonna start meeting with people and making extra efforts to communicate. I think the Lincolnites are good people. They want to comply. They also want to be successful with business. And we just need to talk to each other a little bit more. And much like Councilwoman Washington, I'm assured now that their efforts are there, and we're gonna keep getting better every day.
Good. Anybody else? Okay. We all saw the constituent correspondence that were delivered to us, the meeting invitations. At this point, I guess we can call on the chairman, unless anybody has anything they want to say for the betterment of our Director's meeting. Seen none, we stand adjourned.
Okay.